Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Thursday, July 6, 2023. The time is now 7:07. Pursuant to the requirements of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, notice that this meeting was published in December 8, 2022, issues of the Nutley Sun, the Herald News, and the Star Ledger. A copy of this notice has been posted on the Nutley Town Hall Bulletin Board, and a copy is on file in the municipal clerk's office. Commissioner Kelly.
Present.
Commissioner Evans.
Here.
Commissioner Petracca. Commissioner Tucci.
Here.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Here.
All present, Mayor.
Minutes, Madam Clerk.
Yes, thank you. We have Board of Commissioner meeting minutes for June 8, 2023.
Move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli. And that's it for minutes. No problem. We're up to communications.
Communications.
Thank you, Mayor. We have two this evening. The first one, the Nutley Thriving Survivors has submitted an event application to hold their annual walk on Sunday, October 1, from 6:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. The walk begins and ends at John H. Walker Middle School. And Holy Family Catholic Church has submitted an event application for their 31st Annual Italian Festival to be held on Thursday, September 21 through Sunday, September 24 at 28 Brookline Avenue for various hours on those days. I need a motion, please.
Move it. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca. Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
And that's it for communications.
Reports, Commissioner Tucci.
Yes, Mayor. Thank you. I have a shade tree report for the month of June 2023.
Thank you. Bills, Madam Clerk.
Thank you, Mayor. Bill is for July 6. Public Affairs, $1,6,128.25. Revenue and Finance, $2,836,592.87. Public Safety, $68,306.9. Public Works, $375,891.57. Parks and Public Property, $888,853.41. Water Utility, $206,396.43. Payroll as of June for, I'm sorry, payroll for Friday, June 9, 2023. Regular payroll total, $873,031.37. Overtime payroll total, $66,199.94. Total payroll, $939,231.31. For a grand total of $5,421,399.93.
Move the bills.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
And that's it for bills, Mayor.
Public comment on agenda items only. Madam Clerk?
Uh, yes, Mayor. One moment. Sorry about that. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name for the record. Unless further time is granted by the Board, each person shall limit their address to three minutes. All remarks of the Board and its individual members must be addressed to the Mayor. The Mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the Board.
Anybody like to address the Board of Commissioners on agenda items only? Seeing none, let's move on to Board of Commissioner announcements. Questions?
Nothing to see here.
I just like to say the fireworks this year were great, and I had a time of my life there. Great job, Mayor. Great team we have up here, and a lot of people coming into the store saying that Nutley does it right. Really well done.
Well, listen, this is, like I said the other night, this is a team effort, right? We can't do this without everybody working together, and I'm proud that the way we do all work together to get things accomplished. So, um, thank you, and thank, thank you.
Well done, Mayor.
Thank you.
Mayor, John, do you have anything?
Oh, I'm sorry. It's okay, Mayor. I would like to echo Commissioner Petracca's sentiments. It was a great firework display, and I also have an announcement that, uh, recently, the United States Military recovered the remains of a war veteran who died. His plane was shot down over the Pacific in World War II. They finally found him. They're bringing him home tomorrow. He's, there's going to be a private service on Tuesday, but we're asking the town to come out in front of the World War II monument on Tuesday, probably around 11:45 as his funeral procession drives by to give him a hero send-off. And it's a testament to the United States Military that no matter what, no matter how long you're missing, they'll never stop looking for you to bring you home. So, we want to thank him and his family for his service and his sacrifice, and send him off right.
Thank you, Commissioner.
Mayor?
Yes.
I have one.
Yes, sir.
Okay. Just a reminder, July 13, from 10 to 2, the DMV Mobile Unit will be down at Park Avenue for inspections and license information, you know, registrations and all of those things. Just echoing everything, you know, Maro, always, this doesn't happen without making the parking lot available. You know, the work, Al, for making sure the police are there to, it's well attended. You know, every, you know, the whole board supports this whole thing, and, and, uh, Aleni, thank you for always following up with DMV to remind them that, to keep coming back to Nutley.
You're welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mayor, if I may, I think I forgot, failed to mention his name. It's Anthony DePetta. He lived here in Nutley, and he's coming home roughly 80 years after he died finally.
Wow, incredible.
I have one announcement that Saturday, July 8, from 9 to 1, there'll be an electronics recycling in a parking lot, 7 behind Beluche, so. Any other announcements, Commissioners? Let's move on to ordinance introductions. Ordinance number 3518, ordinance to amend Chapter 652 of the Nutley Township Code entitled Tobacco. This is on behalf of both the Board of Commissioners. I move this order to be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun, together with the notice required by law and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on August 1. I move the ordinance second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. 3519, an ordinance providing for improvement of the Nutley Board of Education Buildings, Facilities, and Fields in the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex, New Jersey, and making an appropriation of $600,000 therefore from the Capital Improvement Fund of the Township. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertise in the Nutley Sun together with a notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on August 1, 2023. So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
My second ordinance was.
I'm sorry. Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
I'm sorry.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
Thank you.
Okay.
Go ahead.
Very good. Go ahead. 3521, one more ordinance. This is an ordinance to amend and revise Chapter 700 of our zoning code. This, this ordinance addresses administrative changes that have needed to be done for, for a while and will improve our zoning code. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in the Nutley Sun together with the notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for final passage by the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on August 1, 2023. So, move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Petracca? I have ordinance number 3522, an ordinance to amend salaries of certain officers and employees in the Township of Nutley, County of Essex, State of New Jersey, effective January 1, 2023. I move that this ordinance be passed to a second reading and advertised in Nutley Sun together with notice required by law, and that further consideration of said ordinance for the final passage of the Board of Commissioners be held at its second reading on, I believe, August 1. Move it.
I need a second. Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
I have ordinance number 3515, an ordinance to amend ordinance codified in the code of the Township of Nutley, Chapter 22A, entitled Vehicles and Traffic, particularly Article 7, Special Zones and Areas, Section 29A, entitled Handicap Parking, to the location set forth. This is for Entwistle, Olsonav, and King Street. I move that this ordinance be passed to its second reading. Public hearing, please. Oh, this is the public hearing. Excuse me.
That's all right.
Okay. Would anybody like to be heard, like to be heard on ordinance number 3515? Seeing no one, Commissioner?
I move the ordinance.
Second. Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Close the public hearing, right?
Moves to close the public hearing for seconds.
This to close the public hearing.
Right.
Yeah. Yeah.
Okay, so Commissioner, Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Commissioner, I'm sorry, Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
And move ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
And then we have ordinance number 3517 that we are at the table tonight. Well, that's all I have. Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you. This is ordinance number 3516, an ordinance for adoption of the Flood Plane Manager Regulations of the Township of Nutley. Would anybody like to be heard on ordinance number 3516? Seeing no one, I move that we close the public hearing.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. I move the ordinance.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Bishop Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi. We have a need to go into executive, hopefully a short executive session before we move to the rest of the agenda. Mr. Bruno?
Contract negotiations. Madam Clerk?
Any motion?
Move it. Second.
Second?
Second.
Thank you. Whereas Section 8 of the Open Public Meeting Act, Chapter 231, Public Law 1975, permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public bodies of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to closed executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley move into closed executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be it further resolved that at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public, shall be when and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley, pending indoor anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly.
Hi.
Commissioner Evans.
Hi.
Commissioner Petracca.
Hi.
Commissioner Tucci.
Hi.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Hi.
The time is 7:20.
Madam Clerk, we're back on the record.
Thank you. The time is 7:36.
Let's move on to resolutions. Commissioner Kelly?
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one on for this evening. That's jointly with.
Thank you, Mayor. I just have one on for this evening. That's jointly with Commissioner Evans, and it's a resolution authorizing approval to submit a grant application and execute a grant agreement for the LED Grant Assistance Program. This is to get some money to offset the cost of LED investigations in homes. I'm just going to read the resolution part, just to save some time. Now therefore be resolved that the governing body, the township of Nutley, does hereby authorize the mayor, Joseph P. Scarpelli, to sign the attached agreement and thus bind the township of Nutley to grant, to the grant agreements terms in order to receive the $28,500 in funds from the DLGS. So moved.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Evans?
Thank you, Mayor. Resolution number 15123. It's the governing body certification of the compliance with the United States Equal Employment Opportunity Commission's enforcement guidelines in consideration of arrest and conviction records in employment decisions under Title VII of the Civil Rights Act of 1964. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley hereby states that it has complied with NJSA 48:4-5, as amended by PL 217, C 183, by certifying that the total, the local unit hiring practices comply with the above referenced enforcement guidance and hereby directs the clerk to cause to be maintained and available for inspection a certified copy of this resolution and the required affidavit to show evidence of said compliance. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye.
My second resolution authorizes the treasurer to refund escrow monies in the amount of $18,760.06 for the accounts and the addresses listed in the resolution. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the Township Treasurer is hereby authorized to refund the escrow monies in the total amount of $18,760.16, as listed in the resolution. So move.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner Evans. Commissioner Patraco?
A resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex requesting approval for, of all items of revenue and appropriations, NJSA 48:4-87 Automated License Plate Reader Grant. Whereas NJSA 48:87 provides that the Director of Division of Local Government Services may approve insertion of any special items of revenue in the budget of county municipality when such items shall have been available by law and the amount was not determined at the time of adoption of the budget. Whereas the director may also approve the insertion of the item of appropriation for equal amounts. Section one now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex, New Jersey. Hereby request the Director of the Division of Local Government Services to approve the insertion of an item of revenue in the budget of the year 2023 in the sum of $91,666, which is now available from New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety American Rescue Plan, ARP Act 2021 Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund Automated License Plate Reader Initiative. Pursuant to these provisions of statute, section two be further resolved that the like sum of $91,166 is hereby appropriated under the caption, grant, general appropriations, operations excluded from caps, automated license plate reader, other expenses, $91,166. Be further resolved that the township clerk for two certified copies of this resolution to the Director of Local Government Services. Second page. I think that's it. I move the resolution.
Any second?
Second.
Thank you. Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That's all I have, Mayor. Thank you, Commissioner. Commissioner Tucci?
Yes. Whereas Township of Nutley has a need to acquire specialized professional services as a non-fair and open contract pursuant to the provision of NJSA 19:44A-20.5. And whereas the township through the Department of Parks and Public Property has a need to acquire specialized and professional services for response to NJDEP for Tremont Garage Communications, reporting, sampling, and analysis, and Father Glotzback Field Deed Notice. And whereas the anticipated term of this contract is for 12 months from the date of contract award. And whereas Veridian Environmental Consultants, PO Box 3009, Upper Montclair, New Jersey, has submitted a proposal indicating they will provide such services for a sum not to exceed $12,700. And whereas Veridian Environmental Consultants has completed and submitted a business entity disclosure certification, which certifies that said corporation has not made any reportable contributions to a political candidate or committee in the Township of Nutley in the previous one year, and that the contract will prohibit Veridian from making any reportable contributions to the term of the contract. Whereas funds are available from account 3455C in the amount of $12,700, and have been certified by the Chief Financial Officer, said certification being attached to this resolution. Now therefore be it resolved that the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey enter into a contract with Veridian Environmental Consultants as described herein. Be it further resolved that the business disclosure entity certification and the determination of value be placed on file with this resolution, and be it further resolved that a notice of this action shall be printed once in the Nutley Sun in accordance with local public contracts law. I move resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. That's all I have, Mayor.
Do you want me to read that second one?
Yeah, Commissioner Patraco, you go.
Yes.
You have an additional one, right?
Okay, I do. Thank you, Mayor. Resolution of the Board of Commissioners of Township of Nutley, County of Essex, accepting funds, automated license plate reader for the police department. Whereas the Township of Nutley has received $91,666 from the state and New Jersey Department of Law and Public Safety American Rescue Plan, Act 2021 Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund, Automated License Plate Reader Initiative. And whereas the state amount, $91,166,000, there is not any in-kind or local match amount. And whereas the award number is ALPR-13-21, and the award period December 1st, 2022 through November 2024. Whereas the Township of Nutley is authorized to accept this award. And now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the American Rescue Plan, Act 2021 Coronavirus State Fiscal Recovery Fund Automated License Plate Reader Initiative funds in the amount of $91,166 are accepted and will be used for the purpose described in this grant application. I move it.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye, thank you.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Thank you, Commissioner. Whereas the New Jersey Department of Treasury, Division of Taxation, has provided tax clearance certificates, and said licensees are qualified to be licensed according to all standards established by NJSA 33 and regulations promulgated thereunder, as well as the pertinent local ordinances and conditions consistent with Title 33 for each establishment listed below for this renewal period. Whereas these establishments have been inspected by the Board of Health, Fire Department, Code Enforcement Department, and the Police Department of Township Nutley, and are in satisfactory condition. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners Township of Nutley County of Essex State of New Jersey that the renewal of plenary retail consumption licenses, plenary retail distribution licenses, and club licenses be granted to the following: licensees effective July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Be it further resolved that municipal clerk B. and is hereby authorized to sign and issue said license certificates for the licensing period of July 1st, 2023 through June 30th, 2024. Matt Holdings Pocket License Plenary Retail Consumption License, Matt Joe Holdings LLC Pocket License Plenary Retail Consumption License, and GLL Group LLC, trading as Bella Luce 507 Franklin Avenue Plenary Retail Consumption License with Broad Package Privileges. I move the resolution. Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Before I go to my next resolution, I would like our redevelopment council, Mr. John Anglissino, to just give us a little background before we move this.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the commission, ladies and gentlemen. John Anglissino from the Wolf County Municipal Government Council.
Mr. Anglissino, I don't think your microphone is on. How's that? Any better?
Better.
Okay. Okay. Sorry about that. So this is the former Diamond Spring Pool Club property, which had been the subject of litigation over the past decade or so, in which owners had challenged the zoning on the site. Back in 2002, the township had settled and completed a blight study and declared the pool club site as an area in need of redevelopment on a condemnation basis, meaning that the township prioritized the development of this site and declared it a public purpose to have the site redevelopment redeveloped in a way that would benefit the community. In May of 2002, the township settled all litigation with the Diamond Spring owners, which again obligated the township to declare the Diamond Spring entity as the redeveloper of the property. In August of last year, the township adopted the redevelopment plan, which sets forth an 85-unit luxury multifamily development of the property, with 82 of the 85 units being age restricted. The project schedule requires the redeveloper to submit for site plan approval within six months tonight, commence construction within six months after receiving the approvals, and to complete the project by July 31 of 2027. In redevelopment, there's a public purpose in the project actually being completed, and so attached to the redevelopment agreement, which will be acted on tonight, there's a schedule that the redeveloper, construction schedule that the redeveloper is obligated to follow. The redevelopment agreement has been negotiated. It has been negotiated thoroughly, and it provides for an agreed-upon redeveloper designation, and again obligates the redeveloper to redevelop the property in accordance with the redevelopment plan, which is incorporated as an exhibit in the agreement. So no concept plan review or negotiation is necessary and required here. Sometimes in the redevelopment process, there's an extra step before the redeveloper goes to the planning board. They have to come back to the governing body for the governing body's approval of a concept plan. Here, that step has already been taken, so the redeveloper will go directly to the planning board. The redevelopment agreement is paired with an escrow agreement, which was also negotiated and approved, and that requires the redevelopers to reimburse the township for its expenses, including prior incurred expenses regarding the redevelopment of the property. So along with the signature pages, the redeveloper has delivered a check in the amount of $58,696.83 to reimburse the township taxpayers for expenses incurred through April of 2023. So this is another step in the process to realize the redevelopment of this site. The next step will be the site plan process, which will take place in the ordinary course, and then from there, construction and redevelopment of the site in accordance with the redevelopment plan. If the redeveloper defaults, the township has all of the remedies and protections that would typically be afforded to a municipality, including the right to terminate the redevelopment agreement, assume control of the property, and find another redeveloper who will develop the site. We don't envision that to happen. We don't hope that happens. I just wanted to make sure that everybody is aware that the township is thoroughly protected in the redevelopment agreement. I don't have anything else, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Anglissino. Commissioners, any questions or comments before we move the resolution? Good? Good? I'm going to move the resolution by title. This is on behalf of the Board of Commissioners. Resolution authorizing the execution of redevelopment escrow agreements with the Diamond Springs Real Estate Investment Urban Renewal Incorporated. I move the resolution.
Second.
Commissioner Kelly.
Before I vote aye, I would just like to stress and emphasize that this is a result of some years of litigation, and this was the best alternative to fighting that litigation. And I think all the commissioners agree with me that we would all prefer single-family homes on the land, but the risk of litigation, and if we lost, could have resulted in over 120 units being put on that property without any variance required, any setback, or some limited setback requirements. This is the best result for the township, and so I vote aye.
Commissioner Evans.
Aye.
Commissioner Patraco.
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci.
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli.
Aye. Thank you. We, let's move to public comment.
Thank you, Mayor. All persons addressing the Board of Commissioners regarding community concerns should approach the microphone and provide their name. Unless further time is granted by the board, each person shall limit their address to five minutes. All remarks of the board and its individual members must be addressed to the mayor. The mayor may defer citizens' comments to the appropriate member of the board.
Anybody wish to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Come on up to the mic. Just state your name and your address.
Hello, I'm Russell Ballou, and I live at 136 Center Street. Hello, commissioners, hello, mayor. I am here to address you all today to inform you.
Can you speak a little closer to the microphone? Thank you.
Is this okay?
Yeah.
Okay.
Right.
Hello, commissioners, hello, mayor. I have come to inform you today that I have been chosen as a part of JDRF Children's Congress to go to DC and represent diabetics here in New Jersey. I will be leaving this Sunday and coming back Tuesday night. And it's just really great to do this and to be a part of this town while doing it. Being here was also one of the requirements I had to fill by talking about my type one and raising awareness for it, as well as in DC. I will be talking about ways to lower the price of insulin, as well as other diabetic needs that I need to stay alive every day. And I would like to now ask if you have any questions or comments.
Commissioners, any questions about Mr. Ballou going down to Washington?
Sure, I'll start. I'm Commissioner Kelly. I'm the Commissioner in charge of Public Affairs in the Health Department. First of all, I want to commend you and congratulate you on being selected. It's a, that's a great honor, and I'm sure you'll do great down there. And I also want to ask, how can I help? Because the Health Department falls under my domain, and I'd be, I'd love to work with you to try and help promote your story and get all that information out there for maybe others who are dealing with type one diabetes as well.
Well, JDRF is an organization for all diabetics to come together and really just fight for our rights as diabetics. It's a nonprofit organization, and we take donations to help find a cure for type one. And this has been happening for years upon years, and we're so close, we could feel it. So that would be the best thing to help, as well as spread awareness of diabetes, because not a lot of people know the difference between type two and type one.
Yeah, I would love to, if you would like to work with you and maybe do some sort of profile on you and promote what your struggles is and what type one diabetes is, and what the differences are between type two, and just raise awareness throughout the town. I could give you my card if you would like to share some information. We can, you can share some of your experience down in DC after you get back, and we can share that experience with the rest of the town and raise the awareness that way.
That'd be very well appreciated. Thank you.
First of all, congratulations. And it takes a lot of courage for a young man like you to step up to a podium and go down to Washington and all that stuff. You're very welcome, very proud of you. And you're, Nutley is all about toughness. And my one son had ulcerative colitis, and some of the bills that came through our family, thousands of dollars for one pill. And to me, it's corporate greed, and it's horrible. And everybody should be able to afford to get their treatment. But my son has developed a passion. He's 26 years old now. He goes to a lot of the fundraisers, and I'm sure you'll be doing that. And you know what? There's always hope. You know, the technology is changing. You know, years ago, when my son got sick, there was nothing that they could really do about it. And now, thank God, you know, they were able to, through a few operations, you know, help them out a lot. And hopefully, the same thing happens with diabetes, because I have to tell you, it seems like everybody's walking around with diabetes these days. It's, I don't know if it's the food we're eating, or the chemicals, or whatever. But what are you going to, are you flying down there?
No, we're driving on Sunday.
You're driving down there on Sunday. Well, I just want to congratulate you. If there's anything the police or the fire department can do for you, we'd be willing to do it. If you have a fundraiser, if we could help you raise money, our department, so I'm sure, would be honored to help a young man like you. And your parents should be awfully proud of you. I know I am. God bless you.
Thank you, Commissioner. Thank you, Commissioner Patraco.
Very well. Very well.
Sorry.
I just want to echo some of the other commissioners' remarks. I want to congratulate you, and I want to thank you for representing the state of New Jersey, and more importantly, for representing Nutley as the fine young man that you are. We wish you nothing but the best, and like all the other commissioners said, if there's any way we can help, please don't hesitate to contact us.
Thank you.
Mayor, I will echo everything that's already been said, and I suspect you already understand and appreciate the fact that the entire board is supportive of you and backing you. I encourage you to make your voice as strong as you can possibly make it, and don't be shy. You know, draw on that courage, as you came to the podium tonight, draw on that same courage down in Washington, and bring back some news that, as Commissioner Kelly raised, you know, we can help you, you know, spread, spread the word. Always stay strong. Always stay positive and hopeful. I am a cancer survivor myself, so you know, the, you know, understanding what it's like to face an illness that is life-threatening. I think, you know, I can relate to, you know, sometimes what you feel, but I do believe that staying positive and strong and making yourself healthy by what you do, how you eat, what you eat, how you exercise, the things you do to take care of yourself, and I will end with, always remember, take care of yourself first.
Thank you, Commissioner Evans.
Well, as everybody said, we're very proud of you. You're going down there and representing the Township of Nutley, the state of New Jersey, and your family, and, you know, let's hope that we find a cure for type one diabetes, and, you know, and that we can get these, as Commissioner Petracca said, get these pharmaceutical companies not to gouge people for insulin. So good luck to you. Have a good trip, and come back and tell us how it went. How's that sound, right?
Yeah.
Thank you. Thank you. Would anybody else like to address the Board of Commissioners this evening? Seeing that, we have a need for an executive again. On.
Contract negotiation.
Contract negotiations. Madam Clerk?
Thank you, Mayor. I mean. Whereas section eight of the Open Public Meeting Act, chapter 231, public law in 1975 permits the exclusion of the public from meeting in certain circumstances, and whereas the public body is of the opinion that such circumstances exist, and whereas the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley in the County of Essex and State of New Jersey desires to proceed to close executive session, now therefore be resolved by the Board of Commissioners of the Township of Nutley moving to close executive session to discuss contract negotiations. Be it further resolved that at the time when such discussions may be disclosed to the public shall be when, and such disclosures may be made without adversely affecting the Township of Nutley pending and/or anticipated legal personnel contractual matters and other matters within the exceptions provided for by statute. This resolution shall take effect immediately. Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye. There's not going to be any further action. Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Move it.
Any second?
Second.
Commissioner Kelly?
Aye.
Commissioner Evans?
Aye.
Commissioner Petracca?
Aye.
Commissioner Tucci?
Aye.
Mayor Scarpelli?
Aye.
The time is now 8:00 PM.
Good night, everybody. Good night.